Evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the October 1st, 2024 special meeting of the Town of Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission. Let the record reflect that the meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM Eastern Daylight Savings Time. I see we have all regular members present, so all regular members will be seated, and I believe they're seated for the full meeting tonight, correct? So it's myself, Vice Chairman Ryan DC, Secretary Lynn Conaway, Gary Belkey to my right, and Commissioner Morrison to my left. Next, what's the Commission's pleasure on the minutes of September 17th, 2024?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from meeting number 1768 from September 17th, 2024, as written and submitted.
Motion to approve by Commissioner DC. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Belkey. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. This is a point for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? No one wants to make a public comment, we'll move on. Correspondence? No correspondence. Reports, Clifton, on plan of conservation development regarding request for proposals, P O C D.
Thank you. So I just wanted to follow up on our last meeting. At the last meeting, I provided the Commission with a copy of the RFP that was sent out back in July and finished in August, also provided a copy of the town's procurement policy, as well as a letter from the town's attorney. There was some discussion with the Commission. Basically, what we decided was to originally try to schedule a special date for a meeting that we could discuss the P O C D, just with scheduling concerns with other meetings, finding a place potentially large enough for it, couldn't do that, so I decided to schedule the update discussion again for tonight, invited the town attorney to be present, so Attorney E Step is present with us to answer any questions the Commission may have, specifically regards the opinion that was provided at the last meeting, but then any questions that the Commission had on general statutes, as I see that was the focus of the discussion at the last meeting. So Attorney E Step, do you have any comments first, or do we just want to open it up?
Well, obviously, I'm fully in agreement with the letter that was submitted by Jeff Landrigan. I apologize, he can't be here tonight, he's out on a medical leave right now. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding that, or as Cliff said, regarding the statutes in question.
Anyone on the Commission have any questions for the attorney?
No, I don't. I think his letter, the letter we provided was fairly, you know, extensive and descriptive, and I think gives a clear opinion as to where we stand with it.
I think the question that was raised was, does 822 have any additional bearing on what 8-23 says as might regard the town's, as regards to Commission's unilateral authority with respect to procurement issues?
It does not, because once again, Town of Stonington has a charter and has an ordinance, which takes you away from the general language. If you were not a chartered community, and you didn't have an ordinance for procurement, it might be dealt differently. But all the boards, agencies, commissions, departments, the police department, anyone else, they all have to follow the same procurement policy to the town in order to do that. So this Commission, no other Commissions have authority on their own to bind the town to anything, or to spend any of the town's money if it's not available. And any of you who've dealt with the Board of Finance know, they're not going to be happy with that either in those circumstances. So, no, you're bound by the charter, because that's your basis of being governed now, because you voted for one, and the charter allows for ordinances which create a procurement policy which was provided to you. So no, it still falls under the same rules. You can request, you can have them go through the process if you're looking to hire someone under 822, which I know allows you to do so, but it's still got to go through the policies established by the town.
There are instances where the state charter, if there is pertinent language in there, I don't see it myself, but this is the question that has arisen elsewhere, and I want to make sure that, you know, that question is answered as specifically as it can be, that perhaps the language that insinuates that, or at least mentions that, you know, the Commission has this jurisdiction to bring on consultants, that doesn't trump any of the procurement statutes?
No, because as I said, there's a charter which provides how things are going to be done, specifically in the charter what the policy is in order to procure, and then a secondary, the ordinance as to what the procedures are. Again, if you were not a chartered community, it might be a different issue involved in that, because then you're totally under the laws as they're established, but you have authority as a chartered community to set some of your own policies in that area. So no, it doesn't specifically trump, it doesn't say, well, because it says you have the ability to hire experts or do anything, which you do have, but you have to follow the policies of the town while doing so, so you're not an independent body able to do that on your own.
I encourage anybody, if they have any questions on this, to raise them now.
I think my question is, is not so much the procurement and the RFP and all that sort of stuff, but in terms of selecting the firm. It seems that the P O C D is a document that we are in charge of for the whole town, and that we should have the ability, since they're going to be working basically for us, to choose the firm, and all of us should be able to see the RFPs and discuss as a group which firms we like and want to bring back in for interviews, and that was my position. My point wasn't that, yes, you know, we don't have the money, it all goes to the town and the procurement, but in terms of selecting the firm, I think that, and I'm not going to back down from this, and I'll be the one vote that's against this, that it is our job as a Commission to bring on that firm.
To actually do the selection?
Yes.
Okay.
With, you know, not just all of it, I mean, we could bring in people, someone maybe from other stakeholders who might be involved in the P O C D. I'm not saying like, you know, we could have a subcommittee, maybe a couple of us, maybe someone from, I don't know, someone from the town, and someone from...
Procurement?
Procurement, and someone from E D C, or other people who are going to be involved in this process. It's a huge process, but it is our document.
Okay.
And, let me just, one more thing, and being taken out of that decision process, which is what I was, was not understood, but maybe it's my mind was thinking that we are being taken out of the decision process for hiring the firm.
Okay, I'll say that's not the perception I had at the time.
Okay, all right, so if that's the perception I was...
So I thought your perception was going the other way, that we should be, from the very beginning, having been involved in actually writing the RFP.
Well, I did think that, but it's too late for that.
Okay.
But I mean, I read the RFP, it is so broad, and, you know, we bring somebody in, we can negotiate the scope or tweak the scope a little bit, that, so it's written so broadly.
Which is a good running light.
But I do think, if I was here back then, and when it came out, I would have said, yes, we should have been involved in at least seeing it before it went out, but I wasn't here, and whatever, that's water under the bridge. But like I said, it's such a broad, I mean, a lot of RFPs, it's so broad, that, I mean, if you've read it, we can do pretty much whatever we want.
Which is a good thing, I think.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, you know, I mean, the question is, like, once we bring on the firm and we go through the RFP, we can say, like, oh, maybe we want to, I don't know, like, we don't need all of this, we don't need that, whatever it is, but that's something that can be negotiated once we see the, you know, the company or, you know, firm that we hire, we can negotiate, you know, you can negotiate within the contract, you know, the RFP, once we award the contract.
Right, the details.
Yeah, we can negotiate the details once we pick a firm, and if it is, like you said, it's a QBS process, I mean, we shouldn't even, there should be no money in the RFPs. I mean, the way a QBS really works is there should be no doll, I don't know, how was, I don't know if there are dollar amounts, you haven't seen them yet, but a true QBS can have no dollar amounts in it, it is not cost-based, but it is an RFP, it's not an RFQ, so that's different, so there are going to be fees in there. But, no, that's my position, my thought is, I think that we just need a much more active role in selecting the firm, I think we should all at least be able to see all the RFPs, and whether we're on, or something.
Just out of curiosity, is that something that has been done previously in this process with the P O C D, or?
Just in general, the way our procurement policy is written, and I actually included it in my memo, because I had a feeling that that was going to be a question, was that it says in Section 12 that a selection committee will be established to review and evaluate the RFP responses received. The makeup of the committee shall include three to five members to be determined by the first selectman or the purchasing agent if the selection is delegated by the first selectman. So it's pretty clear in language how that selection committee is established for RFPs, and then the makeup of that would, you know, again, either the first selectman or the purchasing agent as directed by the first selectman.
So traditionally, in the case of matters involving planning and zoning, that's the way it's done. We haven't done a P O C D since 2004. I've asked the question, how it was done in 2004, and I don't have an answer yet, or I'd share it with you if I did.
I was there.
How was it done then?
How was it done then?
We interviewed, we, as a Commission, interviewed the people that came in.
So was that delegated to you from the first selectman, as I understand, or the purchasing agent?
No, it was just our, what we did, it wasn't deleg, I don't know when those...
Was there a committee?
I don't think those, yeah, there was definitely a subcommittee.
Oh, okay.
I think there was some people, you know, I think people who didn't, it was basically like, people who didn't want to be on it in the planning and zoning didn't have to be, but most of us were pretty involved in it. I don't think the procurement, is there a date on those, those were not around, I'm going to say in 2004.
I don't believe that the procurement policy as established now was around in 2004.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't think that was an issue back then, and it was...
So that was, you didn't have to deal with that back then?
Yeah.
So to go back to it, we've got to, we've got to try to move on from this, we've got a very long agenda tonight, but, and I don't want to tie the attorney up all evening because the meter is running, and we want to be mindful of town conference. But traditionally, in those past selections that I'm aware of, since I've been on the board, is there's always been a member from the requesting agency on the panel, so we do have some connection, if protocol is followed, there will be somebody from this Commission on the panel.
Well, as I said, there's one person, but I think since it is our, I would, and I understand, like, so you're saying that we can't pick it, but I would say it should be mostly us, and maybe some...
I agree with that.
You don't agree with that?
I do agree.
Oh.
Because my understanding is that we, this Commission, is responsible for the final document, so we should be responsible for who we're going to be working with in order to produce that document, to generate that document that we're going to bring forward. So, I mean, we have this policy that we're going to have to follow, I think it's a little odd, but, okay, but I think it should be...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what's odd?
The policy.
The policy.
What policy?
The procurement policy.
The procurement policy that it's not the board, our Commission, that selects the consultant.
Okay, so the charter, the charter.
The charter, okay. So I feel as if we should be heavily involved in that process, not just have one member. We have various levels of experience, and, again, we're going to be the ones working the closest with these people.
That's a fair point.
On our shoulders.
That's a fair point.
And I don't think, I don't think that there would be much resistance to that if we brought it forward to the first selectman and said, you know, we have three people on the Commission that want to be part of the selection process. I just can't imagine that that would be an issue.
So I think you're following the charter in raising that issue, and at least asking. That issue will follow this, you know, if the RFP moves forward, a committee will be appointed, and we can make the point to the first selectman that the Commission is requesting additional representation on this.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all in agreement.
I think, I think that's, I think that's fair enough, but, you know, we can ask, and I don't think that's unreasonable. With regard to the RFP, I agree that it would have been nice to see it in advance, fortuitously, it's written very broadly, so it allows the selection committee to probe all those areas, because it's written so broadly, and develop a very specific selection criteria within the criteria, the broad criteria that's established within the RFP. So, you know, it's not like I don't expect we're going to get a waiver from O P M that protects our ability to get state funds, but I also would like to, if we can, move the RFP forward, if that's possible, with the proviso that we ask in this specific case, since the statute does give us a heavy role in the preparation of the P O C D, that we be afforded additional representation on the selection committee. Does that fairly sum up what we've discussed tonight?
I think not just ask them, like, strongly ask them.
Strongly recommend that this be adopted.
That there be, I mean, I would, I would really be, I would love to be on that committee, I don't know who else would, but, you know, three, at least two, at least.
I will strongly advocate for that position, you know, we're not the appointing authority, so we're, you know, sort of limited to that, but I would think that it does make sense, since we are responsible, since there will be, as you say, someone from procurement that makes sure that everything with regard to set-asides and things that we're not all experts in, affirmative action, those types of things, which have to be protected under a procurement like this, and elements of contemporary planning that our planner brings to the table. All those things are still protected in the selection process, and we're following the charter, and it's their discretion, I think, to appoint, so I'm happy to, I'm happy to make, I'm happy to make that point, and I'm pleased, I'm glad that we had this session and everybody raised these concerns, because I do agree that we have a heavy responsibility here.
Just curious, the zoning rewrite, Francisco's firm, the subcommittee, I was, how was that arrived, that subcommittee, do we know?
Subcommittee?
Well, who picked Francisco's firm?
That was, Francisco's firm was picked, and Dave and I were appointed to the selection committee. I don't remember how many other people there were, but there were at least two in that case, so it isn't limited to one, we know that.
Yeah, so it was a good zoning, we had a say in that.
So we know, we know it can happen, we did have a say.
I think that, I think it would be a welcome comment to bring, I'm sure that people want us to be involved, they want to make sure that we have our eye on the ball here, and I think it's going to be welcome.
I would caution you, though, that you can't have three. You're a five-member board, if you have three members on any committee, you now have a quorum, which means you have to have a meeting posted for each time that you're doing it, because you're not, you're not members being invited to another meeting, you in fact are now part of that meeting, so that's probably the reason there were two previously, that three kicks you into...
That's a very good point, yeah, that's a very good point.
And since I represent the town on F O I issues, I'd be going up there when you don't post your stuff, it'd be dealing with it, so.
But also, we could just post it as a meeting.
You could, but that's just, all the issues involved in that become tied in with that, as far as things.
Well, let's put it this way, if the board empowers me to have this discussion, we'll have to take into consideration those issues, and then, as a board, we'll figure out who is best to represent the board as, or, wait a minute, I'm sorry, we're not, we're not the appointing authority, we can't do that either. So, you know, I'd like to know, and you can register your interest with Clifton, who would be interested in serving in that capacity? Any other further questions for the lawyer? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry to disturb your evening concert.
No problem, my wife works late on Tuesdays.
Appreciate it.
Yes?
I'm sorry I couldn't be here on time to get to the public comment hearing.
That's okay.
It has nothing to do with this.
Okay. Good idea. We'll go backwards to public comment.
Thank you.
Chuck, is there any decision you want to make through this, or group consensus?
Can you hold off just one second, please? You have a motion on that? You do?
Do we, I mean, or? That's just a, we just, after we need a vote, we just tell them.
Is it okay then, so we are all in agreement that we want to move forward with the RFP process? I think, I think what's, what would be best is, since this should have come to the board and been authorized before it really went out to the public, there's no harm done, our lawyers have said that, and we've come to agreement on the composition of the selection committee as to, as to how we're going to request representation, or greater representation of this panel on the selection committee. I think, I think to clear the record, the best thing to do would be to authorize the RFP to proceed, and that's really all we need. Do you agree?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the best, just for the record.
Right, okay, so a motion to do that, to have...
Sure.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the RFP to move forward in the process, with a specific notation that we are requesting that the select person consider at least two members of the P N Z board to be part of the decision committee.
Motion made by Commissioner DC. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary, thank you, Gary. Any discussion on that motion? I would just add the word strongly advocate into the motion, I think that was...
Agreed.
...the expression of the board, and I will also make that known myself with call. So any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that four ayes? Okay, and the chair also votes aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you all. Carleen, under public comment.
Right, for record, my name is Carleen Donna Rummo, and I know you have a heavy agenda, and this is not going to take very long, but I do come before you tonight with a concern, and I want to get some kind of clarification on the planning department's policies on advertising public hearings in the New London Day and the Westerly Sun. I'm happy that the legal advertisements do appear in the Westerly Sun, because a lot of Parkington residents do not subscribe to the New London Day, and this has been a long-established policy of the two newspapers, and I believe it's been by court order. What I also believe is that it has been an established policy that all public hearings are included in the legal ad, meaning brand-new locations, as well as continued public hearings. Tonight, there are two public hearings on the agenda, so I am perplexed as to why the first public hearing, a continued public hearing on the proposed text amendment, does not appear in the legal ad. And I brought copies of Friday's legal ad in the paper, where there's only the second public hearing that is recorded. If this is a policy change, I do not believe it is in the public's interest, nor do I believe that it is in the spirit of full transparency of the town's business related to zoning matters. I also am not aware, and would like to be informed, if this is something that is governed by state statutes, that says you do not have to advertise continued public hearings. But if it was a human error, I think it should be addressed. So I thank you for the opportunity to come before you with my concerns, and I'm ready to hear why this has happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clifton, is there, is there a legal notice problem with either of these, or any of these?
No, it's statutorily required to post for the first public hearing, but not continued public hearings.
Not for continued, correct.
I'll give you that citation.
Okay.
Anything beyond that for continued public hearings would be a, would be a policy change, and would be going above and beyond the state statute requirements.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that matter to our attention, Carleen.
I just think it's always been that way, and it should be, anyways, only a little bit more likely, town has to pay for.
Yeah, you know, I have to say that I agree with that statement, that, you know, we have sometimes continued applications are pretty beefy, and they're pretty high-profile for the community, and I would think that we would want that to be published, even though perhaps it's not dictated by the state, and how would we go about making that happen?
Funding. I mean, the short answer is, it would be, it would be a policy change against what we've traditionally done, as long as, as long as I've been present here, and so, you know, if we went in a different direction, I'd have to look at the funding to make sure how much extra we needed, I don't see it as a terribly intensive cost, but it is a, it is a cost, and so we would have to, I'd have to look into that. So I don't have an answer for you tonight, I'd have to get you one in another meeting.
I appreciate it, because I, I think this is an important point. Again, when we, usually, when it's a continuation, it's a hot topic, and I think people need to know that, that they didn't just miss the meeting, or whatever, and sometimes, I have to be honest with you, you know, somebody might open the meeting and ask for it to be closed, almost hoping that no one shows up the next time, so I think that would be a good way to prevent that from, from taking place as well, so that'd be great.
Makes me wonder how, this is another acquisition question, you know, normally in the charter, it specifies whether it's services or goods that are being purchased, there's a maximum value before it has to go out to bid, or RFP, RFP, if it's viewed to be, there are some qualitative issues to the purchase, it's sometimes RFP, and you wonder how this is done, and if really we're following the charter. If they aggregate the purchase, I'm sure it's more than the amount that has to be bid or RFP, if they fragment the purchase, it's probably not.
Okay.
You know, on a monthly basis, it's probably below the maximum value.
Right, right.
But we can ask all the questions.
Yeah, that would be great, that'd be great.
Thank you. All right, so we're back on the agenda, we finished up on staff reports, thank you all again for that, I appreciate the consideration of all of you in moving it forward, it's an important matter, and I think it's important that we're able to reach consensus on that, I thank, my thanks to E. G. No report from myself, anyone else have anything for the good of the Commission? Hearing none, moving on to zoning enforcement violations, nothing specific. We come to the first item for administrative review, Town of Stonington, I see our landscape architect is here, there's no legal ad that has to be read for administrative review ad, it's correct. Anyone from the town, they're all?
Just me today.
Okay. Please introduce yourself and proceed.
Good evening, everyone, for the record, my name is Chad Frost with Kent Frost, Land and Architecture, here on behalf of the town, on behalf of Boathouse River, or Mystic River Boathouse Park. So you approved this last year, and one of the stipulations of your approval was to come back if we had any revisions through O S T A D O T, and technically, that stipulation said to go to staff, what we felt was worth just bringing back to you, since this is a public park, and you'll be noticing it as you drive in. So the very minor revision, but just wanted to bring it to your attention, this is the approved plan, the only revision happened at the entrance driveway, so if you remember, we have an entrance coming in and an exit going out that's shared with Delmar Hotel. The entrance in, we were asking for a widened driveway that would allow for movements from both southbound and northbound on Route 27. We knew D O T, District 2, and O S T had some concerns about that, and unfortunately, those concerns became true, what they requested and required us to do was to restrict it to right turn in only, so there's no left turn into the site, so if you're going northbound on Route 27, you can't turn in, you'd have to go down, turn around, and come back again. Their concern was that there could be a backup of traffic waiting to turn left at the light into the Seaport parking lot, and if that backup got too long, it would block traffic trying to turn in, doing that next left-hand turn into the lot, so they required us to... So they required us to change the curb alignment, make it so physically somebody can't make that turn. And then the third plan is show some additional signage, basically the, the left turn signs and or do not enter signs and some of those things that we had to work around the driveway. So, very minor, but wanted you to see it.
I think from a functional perspective, it's, it's an important change.
You know, it's interesting, because I would think that you might have trailers with really big, yeah. And so...
We had to prove to them that they can still make all these movements.
Yeah.
Coming in this direction, and they can make, we had to run the full simulator for the trailer to get them all the way through.
So, coming from the other direction, where would they have to turn around?
Most likely, so what they currently do is park in the lot across at Rossi Hill. So there is the ability for them to circle back behind the back of the mill, come down the street here.
Oh, I see where to, okay. Yeah. It took beyond that, right?
Yeah, we don't expect them to do that very often, but, and actually, they store the trailer over there quite often, so that'll be just a normal movement.
And would there be any signage that would indicate?
All, yeah, all the, the no left turns signs that are now going to be on both sides of the street.
Okay.
To keep people from trying to make that movement. And then the physical curb shuts out so that it really only allows for right-hand turns.
How long did the OSTA process take from start to finish?
Eight months? Ten, eight, ten months?
It's an arduous process.
It is.
Now, you have to proceed with an encroachment permit?
We have filed all these plans with District 2. District 2 is involved in the OSTA process.
So they're concurrent?
They are.
Okay.
So they've seen them, they approved them locally, we now are in that encroachment permit process.
Do you have any drainage connections at all that, that they're reviewing?
They are reviewing the drainage, but we're not sending any of our water out into their system.
Okay.
Their system cuts through the site, but we're choosing not to use it because of the condition of their pipe, would probably require us to fix their pipe.
I know OSTA take, or OSTA takes a long time in, in their process, and they're very thorough in their review. The Corps of Engineers is even longer, my alma mater.
Well, if you want to, we just actually received Army Corps permitting for this coastal remediation work, and it was shorter than OSTA. Normally, I totally agree, right now, the process is a little bit curt, so we're happy with that.
Well, it's, it was a good set of plans.
Good.
I told you that the last time. I think that your office and AECom did an outstanding job of detailing this at, at the planning and zoning phase, so that the modifications by subsequent reviewing agencies are very small. In many cases, the plans that we get are more like preliminary plans, recognizing that you're going to go through exhaustive reviews of, you know, waterway requirements and traffic requirements and federal DOT requirements, and the plans are going to change. But when they're detailed to begin with, it actually goes faster. Thank you for your attention to detail.
Thank you.
Now, I guess we have to consider, consider this fully, so is there an approval required here, Clifton? There is. Anyone have any questions of the applicant? Clifton, any other additional information to report? Any waivers or conditions associated with this? Just a simple approval of the application?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application as submitted from the Town of Stonington for the modified site plan.
Motion to approve by Commissioner DC. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Belkey. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes.
I agree with that.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
Both items of old business. First item is Ocean House Partners LLC, represented by SS Trenzia. No reason to read the ad or anything here. Evening, Sergio.
Good evening. Just going to set up my schedule.
How's the knee?
Much better, thank you. Good evening. For the record, Sergio Trenzia with Trenzia and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street, Parktown, Connecticut. For this application, I'm here on behalf of the Ocean House, Ocean House Partners LLC, property located at Two Prospect. And this application is for a site plan. The building is being renovated, being converted from a mixed use. Some of you may recall that there's been a different restaurants, takeout, mostly takeout on the first floor, commercial with commercial kitchen, and three residential units historically in this property. I believe it's all pre-existing non-conforming. Also, with me, here with me this evening is Michelle Babcock. She's a manager for Ocean House Partners, and she can answer any questions that I may not be able to regarding what their, what their use of this property is, is and will be. What prompted this application, and I think Clifton may highlight this, is that there was a change in the regulations recently, the Phase 1, and we have been subject to that. We're converting from the mixed use, which has the one commercial and three residential units, to simply a triplex. So basically, removing the commercial aspect of it and then reallocating some of the space internal. The first floor will become a residential unit. The second floor will also be a residential unit. And then the third floor, there'll be a combination of some, some renovations where those will be the second and the third, will take place on the second and third floors, some changes in the spaces. But all contained within the, the, the building itself, that conversion will remove the commercial use completely. Think the application alluded to maybe a commercial office. There will be no commercial use on this property as part of this application. When we applied, and this is basically when the Ocean House Partners applied for their, they got through, actually, through zoning and building, it came, it came to light that there was some code issues. Since then, by converting it to a residential structure, some of those, mostly fire code issues are a little bit more relaxed because it's not considered a commercial use, it's strictly residential. And that weighed into the cost-benefit analysis of the use of this property, and just going to be using it for, for three residential units. So we prepared a survey. There's no changes to the site. There's a, there's historically been two parking spaces, basically on this site, with a grassy area just beyond it, and it's enclosed with a fence. It's, it's accessed off Prospect Street. You can see the driveway, the southern portion of the site. And there's residential pretty much surrounding it, with the exception of the office, which I own adjacent to, there's a parking lot to the south. So with that, there were some comment, there was some commentary from your town engineer. However, I had discussed such with Clifton, and his concern was that of the adequacy of parking for the triplex. However, I believe that since we are de-intensifying the use of the site, making it no more non-conforming than it already is, and historically, this, this site has had those two spaces, we're going to continue to do so with the same number of residences and actually one less use, so it's a less intensive, intense use of the property, to leave it just the way it is. Because the, the desire of my applicant and my client is to just, is to only renovate the interior spaces, to rearrange it and renovate it to meet code, so they have the three residential units. So that pretty much concludes my presentation. In the background, as I said, Michelle Babcock is here if there's any other questions on this, this property and this application.
Any questions of the applicant?
So, how many, how many bedrooms are in each unit, proposed unit?
I'd have to look that up. No, exactly. We didn't do a bedroom count because we're connected to city sewer, so usually we do to pay attention to the number of bedrooms. I'm seeing on the first floor, there's one bedroom. Second floor, there's three bedrooms. And the fourth floor, there's two bedrooms. Then actually, there, I'm sorry, there is a loft that has also another three bedrooms. So actually, there's four complete stories.
You mean, so the loft is a separate, is that four units or three? One has a loft? Oh, I see, it's the third bedroom and the loft.
No, actually, I misspoke before. The third and the fourth, I believe, are going to be one unit. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's first floor, second floor, third in the loft with the fourth.
Fourth and third one, that's a separate.
Yeah, sorry, I, I misspoke.
So altogether, with all the units, there are eight bedrooms? Is that correct?
I believe so. I'm sorry, I didn't have it off in my head. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Nine, okay. And what's currently there?
The number of bedrooms? Uh, I don't know. I'd have to look it up. Like, I could do so, but I'm not sure how many bedrooms there are right now.
So my point is just about the parking. So, I mean, you've got two spaces, you've got nine bedrooms in the unit, so there does seem to be a little bit of a disconnect there.
Okay.
Can you share some of your parking with them?
We, yes.
They park there now.
Everyone parks there now.
Well, everyone parks there now, but they park there.
Yes, it, as...
They aren't too official, but they do park in your lot. Is that accurate?
I don't know specifically the people that reside there are parking that lot, however...
See them come into their cars and go with that building.
I'm sorry, say it again.
I've seen them.
Yeah, sure. There's a lot of people that park in our lot.
There are a lot.
But I also want to bring up the fact that the folks that are living here are, are employees of the Ocean House. They don't, most of them don't have vehicles. They, they get transportation to and from, from there. So for this specific use, it's not as much of a concern. But to Ms. Morrison's case, point, there is parking on the adjacent lot, which we are willing to, to share with them.
Can we stipulate that?
I don't have a problem with that, no. If you'd like to.
To stipulate, they, you will share, we could, they can use your lot for parking.
Could be some overflow parking, yeah. I do not have a problem with that, though.
Do we need to quantify that?
Any further questions of the applicant?
How many spaces would they need?
Leave anything over two bedrooms. Just required two spaces.
So you'd need...
So three units.
Six.
Need six.
So you would need them there.
There's two there now, so there'll be four.
So you would lend them.
We would work out an arrangement for four spaces, correct?
Makes sense to me.
I mean, I'm not saying they need it right now, but that's not to say that, that the Ocean House is always going to use it as their employee parking. So there needs to be something. You can never, you know, go by what they're going to do today, because who knows what could happen next year.
And just out of curiosity, is there going to be any changes to the exterior of the building height-wise or width-wise? Nothing, everything is internal?
Michelle has not said exterior, right?
Okay. So none of this had to go through design review at all?
Architectural design review? Not to my knowledge. Clifton shaking his head.
Good. Should it have?
No.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant?
I asked that specific question. We were told we did not have to. We did go in front, did we, trainer member went to the police commission, we did go, and they didn't have any comments.
Clifton, any comments?
No additional comments. Sorry, I'm, I'm reading the regulations on residential parking agreements because the dedicated off-site as a stipulation is a weird one, difficult one. It only, it only states that that is required for mixed-use developments and not for strictly residential developments. So stipulating anything would be above and beyond what's required in the regulations to do that, and I would recommend against it, just because if what you do for one, you have to do for all. So anytime a residential project comes in front of the town, you could stipulate excess parking onto them. That would be the same if you were doing an ADU or any other residential development that does come before the commission, so I caution against doing something like that. If the applicant's willing to agree and enter private civil agreement with the property owner, and he can give that confirmation tonight, but to stipulate it requires it, requires that contract to be on the land records, and I wouldn't recommend doing that.
So let me ask this in a different way then. Thanks for that, Clifton. If later on, we went from strictly residential back to mixed use?
That would require a special use permit, and so the entire gambit would...
And they would have to come back?
Yeah, the entire gambit would start over again. Basically, by doing this conversion, they're voluntarily removing the mixed use, the commercial element from the site, and so they're voluntarily abandoning it. So in order to start that process again and go back to a mixed-use development, then the entire special use permit process would kick up.
Okay, I got it.
So I think then, are you and would your client be willing privately, not as part of a stipulation, to come to an agreement for that shared parking?
Yes.
So I think with that, does that satisfy your concern and also make sure we're not putting ourselves or the town in a difficult position with stipulations? So it's not going to be a stipulation, or it is going to be a stipulation?
No, it won't be a stipulation. This is going to be a private agreement.
Okay, so if there are no further questions, no further comments by Clifton, is that my understanding?
Correct.
What's the commission's pleasure on the application of Ocean House Partners LLC for a site plan approval?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application from Ocean House Hotel Partners LLC for the site plan application as submitted.
There are four recommended.
Oh, are there? I didn't see.
Sorry.
The number one that I missed? I apologize. I don't see it.
Oh, no, sorry, that's wrong one. That's the next one.
Okay. Okay.
So a motion made just for the approval of the site plan application as submitted.
So a motion made by Commissioner DC for approval of the site plan application of Ocean House Partners LLC. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Belkey. Thank you both. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? No one's opposed, no extensions. Application is approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's stay right there. For S and C Cassidy, application for coastal area management review for construction of a single-family residence and associated site improvements.
Good evening again. Once again, for the record, Sergio Trenzia with Trenzia and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street. The application before you this evening is for Sean and Kerry Cassidy. We actually, my office prepared, and what I brought up is the prior survey done in 2018 for a previous owner, Mr. Coletti. That's going to be relevant because this application was previously approved, a CAM application was approved back when Mr. Coletti owned the property. And you're going to see that the application which is before you this evening is essentially the same one, the house. Peter Springsteen is the architect. He was also the architect for Mr. Coletti. Basically, Mr. Coletti didn't move forward with the application. The only thing he did do is tear down and demo the structures that were on the site. And through a series of purchases and sales, my client now owns it, and they desire to construct a building... and they desire to construct a building essentially in the same location and largely in the same configuration of the previous approval. So the, and the Cassidys are here this evening along with Peter Springsteele. If there's any questions on the building, we can get into that as well. But the, the location on Mason's Island here, you can see I highlighted in green, just wanted to highlight the, that'll be important through my presentation, of what was previously on the property. There was a gravel, pretty significant-sized gravel driveway that came up the left side of the property. There was a fenced-in pool area and a residence relatively close to the coastal feature towards the wetland. And all that was demoed as part of the previous permit, previous CAM permit that was approved. That previous permit. As we take this in sequence, consisted of a new driveway, removal of, a majority of the driveway, removal of the residence in the back, and removal of the pool. So much of the site features that were historically on this property have been removed, were approved to be removed, and it's going to, and it's gone back to lawn, so you don't have as much impervious area and encroachment on, on and in the vicinity of that well. If you can see that the, just want to kind of lock this into your, into your memory, but this, this house, you can see the configuration is kind of in this T configuration with the driveway, the septic up front, which was approved by Ledge Light Health District. And then in the back is going to be an elevated area that would, and a walkout to the, to the east side. Fast forward to today. There's no more structures on the site, but Peter dust, looks like he dusted off the, the old design and catered it to our current clients to, so to work for what they wanted. But basically, driveway's in the same configuration, septic is in the front, approved by Ledge Light. We are resubmitting that to Ledge Light so that we can get an updated approval, but it's the same, going to be the same number of bedrooms and same, pretty much same size system. Not much has changed within the last, however, many four, four or five years that we've done this. We did have the wetlands reflagged to make sure that our coastal feature was accurate up to, up to today's standards. And you can see that the same configuration of the house, same location, generally same orientation. I think the only change really is that there's a covered area in the back, a raised deck and an impervious patio area, as opposed to what was previously approved was just a patio area to the back. So there is some additional structure. As such, there is a slight increase from the impervious area from the previous approval, albeit very slight, but it's an overall reduction if you look at it from the pre-existing condition, if you take into account the gravel driveway and all the structures and the patios, the pool, pool apron, that kind of stuff. So we've, we've pushed the house pretty much up the hill as far away we could from the, from the coastal feature, trying to get it also elevated such that we are going to be, trying to get it out of the flood zone as well, because this one was smack dab right down in the middle of it, the one that was previously there. There were some commentary from some of the town staff about making sure the building is flood compliant. I believe we've addressed those, those comments and concerns. And Peter's here if, if there is any concerns or questions about the building and its code complacency for flooding. There would be a series of, there's a walkout to the back and also some flood vents that are incorporated per code. That will make sure that this building meets flood code compliance. We have, we have public water or tied to a municipal water system, and we've shown that. The previous water line actually was on the adjacent parcel because at one point, there was two families that owned this, this together, I believe, until they sold this parcel off, I believe. It was when the Coletis bought it. So that water line will be abandoned. There'll be a new utility line. We, there's, there's utilities available, electric and communication. And as I mentioned, there's going to be a septic system. There's an existing dock that will remain. No changes proposed to that, except we shall bring some utilities to it, that's so that they can have water and power to the dock. There was some comments as late as Friday of last week, so we worked very quickly to address those comments by the town engineer. One of them was to incorporate some stormwater. Even though we have an overall reduction in the impervious area on this site as recognized by the previous application, we heeded the advice of your town engineer, and have incorporated for the roof runoff, an area of underground infiltration. We have very good soils and depth to groundwater to the front, not so much to the rear. So we're taking a majority of that roof and putting it in an underground system. That will meet all the separation requirements to the septic, and then a small rain garden in the back of the property to take a small portion of the roof that we can't get around and into the front, because the grade drops off on this side. The other comments from the town engineer was to provide a five-foot offset of the driveway to the westerly property line. Right now, I believe it's four feet. We can add another foot. So if the, if the, if the town engineer, so if it so pleases the town engineer, not an issue. I don't think there's any prerequisite in your regulations that require that, but it's, it's a good, good practice, keep five feet off that property line. He wanted some additional spot grades on the driveway just to assure that the stormwater runoff would be routed around the house and away. That's, that's a good practice to make sure that it's constructed properly and that the water doesn't end up in the garage or in the basement, and it, and it has a way to shed away from the house. He wanted a plan, oh, excuse me, a note on the plan of the proposed excavation. In the right-of-way, required a DPW permit. That's a pretty standard requirement, but we will make sure it's noted on the final plan. And he wanted a designation area for a stock, for stockpile. We will keep that as upgrading as possible. I do not show it on the plan, but I would keep it tight within that, within the LOD that we have specified on the plan. Make sure that it has an appropriate silt fence or straw wattle and erosion controls around it. And obviously, that would be stabilized if it's going to be there for extended periods of time and subject to the sediment and erosion controls on the plan. Don't believe there was any other commentary. As I mentioned, we addressed all the, the code enforcement issues with, I think flooding was the, the flood code was the biggest issue. Unless I'm missing anything, Clifton. I think that should cover my presentation. As I mentioned, my clients are here, Sean and Carrie, and Peter Springsteele is here if you care to have any, want to see any details on the building itself. I have, I have those details too, if you care to see them. But as I mentioned, this is basically a, almost a reauthorization of our previous CAM with not much changing on the site, but this will memorialize what they want to build as opposed to what was previously approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
So.
Mr. Conway?
Ian, you said you're going to put utilities, the plan was to put utilities out to the dock.
Mm-hmm.
My assumption is those are all underground.
Correct.
What is the overall height of the house?
I'd have to pull up the building plans, which I can do. I've got the separate.
It says proposed two-story.
It's just under the 24-foot.
And that includes the chimney?
That's not how it's matched.
Right. So 20, 23, it says here 23. Sound right?
Yep. It was 23.
Are you going to, 23, does that sound correct?
These are the elevations here. Peter, do you mind addressing that? I don't want to misspeak, and Peter designed the building, so.
Peter Springsteele, architect, Mystic, Connecticut. Okay, I'm seeing 106. We have, maximum building height is 24 foot to the ridge from the base flood elevation, and then from average existing grade, it's 25, 10 and a quarter. So there's two criteria in your building height, flood zone. When you're within 150 feet of the coastline, you have to be 24. You can't be more than 24 feet. But you also have to comply with that 30 feet from the average grade, not the base file. So we comply with both of those standards.
And I have one other question, well, two other. Are you going to fill the property to raise the house up? You said you were raising the house, making it on higher land. I just want to make sure that that was just, that you meant you were backing it away from the water versus a backing away and going to raise the ground below up.
We're in an A-zone, so there is, there is going to be a certain amount of fill that is going to be brought in to elevate the structure. But by bringing it closer to the front of the property, we're already taking advantage of the, the elevation that's already there. But for instance, I believe the, this is seven, the, the middle of the building is at elevation eight. We're proposing elevation, that, that pretty much same elevation is, because you're going to lose it as you come down the grade. But this back area here, there will, will be some fill to elevate the patio. And then this, this, the portion of the house here, I don't know if you can see our plan, that's going to be a raised deck with a walk under. So it'll be filled up to this, this patio area here, but this will be able to go under and it'll walk out on this side. So this, there will be some fill in this area and a little bit of fill in the front as well. This is coming up to elevation 10. That's about where we're at. So there's not a tremendous amount of fill coming in. And that's by design, because we don't want to have to bring truckloads of fill. We try to keep the site balanced.
Thank you.
Any other question? I have just one. In the flood study that was done in this area to define the 80-zone, they give you the two-year, five-year, I think 25, 50, and 100. Did you look at any of the lesser events to see how, what elevation it floods to? And it looks like the basement floor here is at, sort of crawl space lap is at 6.0.
Six, yep, yep.
What does that do in terms, not that the design frequency means anything anymore, because it seems like we get 100-year storm twice a year now.
Right.
But how often does, at least in terms of design frequency, does it come up above six?
That I don't know. I'd have to do some more in-depth analysis.
Just a curiosity.
So you've, you've stumped me on that for now. I could find out. But I will make, make the point that this is a coastal area, so coastal flooding is going to be a bit different than.
Correct.
Than the, the storm frequency flooding that you would see for welllands or river and systems. So mostly, we're dealing with storm surges along in this area. And I don't know what that would, would be.
Got you. Thank you. That's the only question I have. Any other questions? Hearing none. Clifton, any comments?
The only comments I had were addressed both through the town engineer's memo, which was provided in the packet, and conversations that were had with the zoning enforcement officer and the building official to review the updated architectural drawings to make sure that they're FEMA compliant. So that addresses my comments, that addresses SLR's comments, and then Connecticut makes the same comment every time for projects on Mason's Island, so take that with what it is.
A very complete set of plans.
Thank you. Well, we did it twice, so.
Sounded like three times.
Okay.
With little time limits, we, so we had to dust them off and revisit it.
Okay.
But Peter and my client made the job easy, because they didn't, didn't change too much. Usually, people want to say, oh, no, we're pushing the house all the way to the water. We want to be exposed. But it actually is more advantageous to be up in the gradient, so take advantage of views.
So we have a CAM review, and that looks like all we're being asked for here. Is it, any site plan approval or anything? Just CAM. There are no further questions of the applicant, no further comments? What's the commission's pleasure on the application of S and C Cassidy?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application of S and C Cassidy for the coastal area management application as submitted with the following stipulations. Number one, any proposed alterations or modifications to the approved site plan as a result of comments from the town engineer shall be subject to review and approval by the town planner and commission as necessary. Number two, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer, excuse me. Number three, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records. And number four, the applicant shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. The bond shall be either in the form of a certified check or a reputable lever of credit, meeting the requirements of ER 15 dot 4 dot 3. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining. Appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures is provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer. Work shall remain bonded for a minimum of one year from the date of zoning compliance.
Thank you, Commissioner D.C. Motion is made with stipulations. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Belkey. Any discussion on the motion?
I just, um, so with the, the town engineer, which came in on 27, did we not receive the town engineer's report?
That's what's, that's what you're looking at, yeah.
So the stipulations.
The stipulations still cover what the town engineer's proposed ideas.
Okay, but, so they still need to be in there since we received the town engineer?
I'd keep, I'd keep them in there just in case they have a back-and-forth conversation.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item C. Spot in CAM Ocean Community YMCA? Okay, that's to be discussed on October 15, that must, and the next one as well.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. No one signed up for either?
Well, you took it away from me.
Oh, sorry, I was, I was too eager.
Thank you.
It's on the second one. What's the second one?
Let's see. These are the two right here. The second one is G Development, I think. Is that the public hearing?
There are two public hearings.
G Development, and the first one is a tax amendment.
Yeah, that's one that's now.
Okay. Okay. So could we just read the synopsis of this application? We're going to open the public hearing for G Development LLC. S. Terenzia representing the applicant. Lynn, do you have something to read? You can just read the notice in the public hearing.
Okay, perfect. Okay. We pursue it to this, this statement?
Actually, I think we can waive it. This is continued from September 17. So I think we simply need a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for G Development LLC for PZ 2418 RA.
Motion made by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan, to reopen the public hearing. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you, sir. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. The way the public hearing The way the public hearing works here is, and everywhere actually, is the applicant makes a presentation, commission has an opportunity to raise questions and have a discussion with the applicant. The staff has its input. At the conclusion of that, the public has an opportunity to speak. If you've signed up, you'll be recognized first. If anyone wants to sign up, the signup sheets are right up here. You can just come around to the rear, sign up for either item in the public hearing agenda. They're both the same applicant. One is for a tax amendment to the zoning regs, the other is a special permit use. And after the public has spoken, the applicant gets an opportunity for a rebuttal. And the public can rebut what the applicant's rebuttal is and will go back and forth until everybody's said their piece. And with that in mind, is Mr. Terenzia here to go forward on this?
Mr. Chairman, he's in the hall. My name is Michael Carey. I'm a lawyer with the firm Sussman Carroll, Will Brendan Green.
Evening, sir.
Good evening to you all. Thank you all for having us. And thank you all for accommodating my vacation back in September, I think. That's why this, why this hearing, all of this was continued.
Hope you enjoy yourselves.
It did, actually, yes. Very much. I really don't have very much to say on the text change. I would refer you all to the town planner's comments, particularly page three. I shouldn't say page three. I think it's page two. Where I believe he recommends that this proposed text amendment be adopted. It's a matter of, I think, reinstating some language, a mechanism that was inadvertently removed from the regulations when the last phase, I think it's the last phase, was, was adopted back in November. So I won't belabor this. I, and I don't know that Sergio has, Mr. Terenzia has much to say about this application. But if you have any questions for me, I'll try to, I'll try to answer them as best I can.
Why don't you go last so and get them back in there?
This hearing, this hearing, this hearing is on the text change only, correct?
Correct, yeah. I guess, can we combine the two? We should vote on them separately because really the second one doesn't have standing until the first one is approved.
Correct.
Or decided upon.
Well, part, part of.
Yeah, actually, you may not need to make the second presentation.
Well, you don't want to hear that.
Bad humor. Bad humor.
Keeps us all relaxed.
So Jenny Carey mentioned it, what was in my report was, this is basically the same language that was in the previous version of the regulations and removed. And it's actually also in our rewrite process, phase two, it's under recommendation number four that we made through the environmental sustainability resiliency section. So it's already been identified again through phase two that we need to put this language back in. Instead of waiting the time to do so, because phase two is going to be a lengthy process, continue to be a lengthy process. Instead of waiting potentially a year for those recommendations to go through the process, the applicant decided to apply earlier. So, yeah, that's pretty straightforward. The commission's already discussed this through phase two and has, or has heeded the recommendation of the consultant to add this back into the regs.
Thank you, Clifton. Does your presentation conclude?
I believe so, unless there's anything you think I left out or you have any questions for me.
Any questions to the commission?
No, I'll, I'll wait to discuss.
Any additional input beyond what helpful comments you've already given us?
No.
Okay.
Is there any history of why it was taken out? Was it an oversight, do you think, or was there any?
I believe it was an oversight, looking through the old minutes, through the phase one process, obviously a lot of that pre-dated my time in the town. But looking through the minutes, I couldn't see this come up as a reason why it was removed. I think just between shuffling sections, this language got removed in the process.
So when was it removed?
So it was approved in October of 2023.
And then it was gone?
When, when phase one was approved.
No, no, like the, I thought you said this original language in the zoning regs and then somehow got deleted at some point.
Correct. And so that removal happened.
Oh, oh, in the, in that part, oh, in, in the, in the sort of the reorganization of the zoning.
Correct, correct. Yep, and so when that was approved by the commission in October, this language disappeared.
Could be by like a quick delete button by mistake or something.
I have to say I disagree with that statement.
I couldn't, I couldn't find it in the minutes. So again, I wasn't there, so I don't know why that converts, how that conversation came about and why the commission decided to remove it. I couldn't find it in the minutes.
Right.
I, I cannot swear that what I'm about to say is correct, but my recollection is that in the comments by the consultant, it was reported that it had been removed inadvertently. And it's not something that I would have thought of. I saw it somewhere.
We have, we have the summaries of the recommendations that came through the first subsection of phase two when we did the environmental work. And this came up under recommendation number four. And that kind of didn't get too much conversation from the commission at the time, but it was, it was present through that process.
Any other questions for Clifton?
No, no.
Hearing that.
But if I could also say, I, I think that reinserting this language will serve a useful purpose, not just to the commission and town, but to property owners in that it reinstates, for lack of a better term, opportunities to exceed technical dimensional requirements in certain prescribed situations. And, and that, I think that safety valve, so to speak, is, is, will be useful to the commission and to the property, property owners. So that's now all I have unless Mr. Terenzia has. He'll have a lot more to say if we do do the next one.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions based on the last statements? No other input?
I would like to say one thing. Mr. Chairman, you don't mind?
No, but I'll meet, please.
Just anecdotally, historically, I had a hotel in Westerly. I know it's a state over and a town over, but we actually promulgated an amendment there and specifically for an area that is prone to flooding. When you have these areas in flood zones, and I wasn't here for, earlier for Mr. Carey's testimony, but often it is difficult to find locations for mechanicals and, and specifically, we, we got a amendment for the Hotel Maria, if you're familiar with that, for an elevator overrun.
Right.
So.
That was recent.
Within the, yeah, they've been, I think it's within the last ten years, maybe in the last five years. He was affected by Hurricane Sandy. Place got demolished and to rebuild out of those ashes, and it was, it was a nice project. You can't really see it on that site because of the, the massing of that structure. But it was a necessity and so we didn't come up with this in a vacuum. The, the town consultants, this is something that they, they brought up to be put back in. And I will point out, it is restricted just to flood, flood zone areas now. The previous, I believe the previous, which was included, was just a general height exception. So I think it's, it's warranted in areas that, that require it in, in these flood-prone areas.
Just thank you, sir. No other comments from either of the representatives of the applicant?
No.
Okay. I don't have anybody signed up on the speakers list here. Does anyone wish to make a statement, either for, against, or just a general comment about this application? Again, anyone wish to make a comment? Hearing none. Does anyone have any other comments on the board on this application?
Well, before you close the public hearing.
Yeah. No other comments?
No, because we're going to discuss it.
Okay. So a motion to close, I believe, is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you both. Anyone in favor of the motion to close?
Aye.
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 unanimous, motion is passed. What's the commission's pleasure on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application as submitted for the zoning reg, pardon me, zoning regulations text amendment application.
Are there any stipulations or, I'm sorry, I don't have full access to my computer to the.
There are no recommended stipulations.
Okay, no stipulations. The motion's made to approve the text amendment by Commissioner Ducey. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Belkey. Thank you both. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I think we might talk about it.
I'm sorry?
We should talk about it.
I'm sorry, you had comments. I, I apologize. Mine is, is not working that well tonight. I apologize. Discussion on the motion, I'm sorry.
So I have to say that I, when we were talking about the rewrite of the regs, especially during coastal red resilience portion of the rewrites, we talked a lot about height. And the proposal was not to allow any increases in height due to any of the text changes that we were, we were proposing, right, changes that we were proposing. I also feel that this is generally overused in the town, has been overused in the town. And I think that the wording of this is very poor and I'm surprised that the consultant would approve of this wording because it, it leads a lot to discretion. It says structurally altered in a reasonable and necessary height above the height limits. Well, who is to determine reasonable and necessary? You can redesign a building. It, it's not, it's not necessary. So it might be necessary for the design that is being presented, but it is not necessary absolute. So no, I, I don't, I don't agree with this text change at all. And I think that in our last public hearing, our meeting of the public, and we put a lot of structures, I agree that they were commercial structures, on board on, for the discussion. And the overwhelming consensus of the community was that did not like the higher height buildings.
I agree, and I recall it.
Right. And we look at downtown Mystic on Cottrell Street and the facade of the latest building that is being built that has the huge, I don't know what you call it, on top of it, making it, hiding the utilities, et cetera. And it's just, it's overwhelming. So no, I, I don't agree with this in any way, shape or form, nor do I agree that this was inadvertently left out.
My recollection of this, discussions of height is very similar, but it wasn't in phase one. It was in phase two when we talked about changing the height of structures in areas that are exposed to sea level rise. That's where we got involved, I think, in the heavy discussion of, of height. And there was, there was a lot of public interest in it, I agree. But it wasn't, it wasn't in phase one, it was in phase two that I recall it. I just may have missed the phase one meeting, but I definitely recall in phase two that there was, there was public interest in the area of not adjusting the height when we had to, in, in cases where sea level rise impacted the first floor elevation.
Exactly, exactly.
Any other items for discussion on this?
I mean, I have a, a comment, I'm sort of with Lynn, but I think it says the square footage of a height exception for a commercial structure shall not exceed seventy-five percent of the roof area. Now, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
You're saying like, you know, three quarters of the roof can be ten feet higher than the rest of the building. But for residential, it's only five percent. So that seems odd to me.
That is a pretty big disparity.
Wouldn't you think? Yes. There's that, and like Lynn said, it needs to be really tightened up. There's a lot of maybe or such as like, you know, a skylight. I mean, can you imagine on a commercial property, a skylight that's ten feet high or than the top of the building, seventy-five percent of the building? That's, that's basically, you're saying you get a whole nother floor on a commercial building. You might not be able to live in it, but it's still.
It's almost like another story.
Yeah. Seventy-five percent of the building.
And it says chinnies, do we really want smoke stats ten feet higher than the rest of the building? I mean, it's just.
Put your architect's hat on again.
Gotta stop that, but, yeah.
It says some roof structures, like in, in zoning regs, I think when you have those qualifier words, it's really hard. You know, some, some roof structures. So that leaves it up to us, but it should be more, more defined.
Tightened up, you think?
Tightened up and that seventy-five percent, I have a, a big problem with that seventy-five percent.
You have an idea in mind what might work? Or you think it has to be discussed?
Well, it could be discussed, but I mean, you're going from five for a residence to seventy-five for commercial. That just seems maybe something in between, maybe.
I don't think we should rewrite this on the spot.
No, 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 I'm not saying to do it now, but I think they need to come back and, or tighten it up. Maybe work with the planner on, or, or something, but.
Or not.
Or not.
Is it something that you might want to table for additional?
No, they'd have to submit another text amendment, a new application.
You already closed the public hearing.
Oh, we already closed the hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes, sir, please.
Is left?
I'm sorry, it's written, I mean, you can't speak. Public hearing calls.
I know that. I just want to say.
I, I don't think, I don't think you.
I'm not going to talk to, I'm not going to address any of the specific concerns. I'm just going to say it would have been helpful to us if these concerns had been mentioned during the public hearing so we could have addressed them. That's, that's all. But I.
Please, it's, you're out of order. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
What's?
We've got a motion on the table, so I guess we've had the discussion unless there's.
Is there any further discussion now? Clifton, any further input on this? Ideas with regard to the percentages? It, it does seem, it does seem like it's, it's awfully loose in the disparity between residential and commercial and that percentage.
I mean, it, it makes sense if you're thinking about a parapet wall to hide HVAC equipment, especially on a large structure. So it, it makes sense that it's seventy-five. That, and you know, in speaking with the zoning enforcement officer, she was in favor of this amendment, didn't put it in comment for the regulate, for the report, but staff, staff at the time when we went through the phase two process and this came up, we were in favor of this recommendation number four as written.
But seventy-five percent isn't, the wall itself wouldn't be seventy-five percent of the roof area. It's going to be that wide, you know, and that's also, if you measured it that way, like, yes, it's covering seventy-five percent, right? But you're saying like a parapet wall physically is not going to be seventy-five percent, it's just going to be a wall with.
Yeah, it's covering, but yeah, if you took three quarters of the building and.
But you put the wall around it, so, but, but that's not covering, that's area-wise, you're saying, area-wise, it's not seventy-five percent of the building. It's the actual physical area of the wall would not be that. So you could calculate, yeah, so you had that, the HVAC is on the roof and the wall is rectangular around.
Rectangular around it, which you typically see on like multifamily.
Right, but that could be, it's covering seventy-five, like it's blocking seventy-five percent, but, but you're saying, but now you're saying you could also just, I know what I'm trying to say, Ben. You're blocking seventy-five percent, but.
You're blocking, but you're not, you're not covering.
Yeah, but, but, but saying seventy-five percent, it could be something that is covering the entire seventy-five percent.
Which would almost be another story.
Yeah.
Right. It's just poorly written, to be quite frank, that's neither necessary. It's not necessary. It's a, it, it can be, you know, covering air, air conditioning units, et cetera, does not have to be on the roof. They don't have to be on the roof. Nor does it have to, the building itself have to be that tall that you would need an additional. an additional 10 feet. You can cover it, make the building lower. So, so I just have to say, I just don't think this should be amended on the fly. We've got something in front of us, and I think we should deny it.
This is only for floodplain zones, right?
Correct.
Flood hazard overlay district.
You know, so, so in some cases, it is, it is not that easy in a floodplain zone because you'd have to have the mechanical equipment elevated above the flood zone. So, so, you know, it is much more difficult and a challenge on the site. And you'd either have to build a new structure or, or fill massive areas, you know, to get the equipment up to that height. So, so I can see, I can see why you need it. What I don't see is, is the need for the extent of it, 75%. That does, that's a very good point. I think, I think that's high. I'm just thinking that, that even in cases where you build a parapet, you know, which, which extends beyond the vertical height, it's usually offset from the edge of the building significantly, and it doesn't cover 75% of the roof. It's offset in all directions. So that it's a small area in the center of the building that works through drop down plenums. You know, I can see if you didn't use drop down plenums, you know, you know, and you wanted to distribute everything on the roof, 75% would be a real cheap way to go. But, but, I don't know, it does, 75% does seem extensive.
Well, and one last thing, I mean, since we are in the middle of this zoning rewrite, this might get, you know, we can talk about it in that as well. I mean, you know, we're not in a rush to do this tonight. We are in the middle of a zoning rewrite where this would, you know, come back in or where they could come back.
I'm just trying to understand it, that's all, I'm not...
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I'm, the 75% is...
Yeah, that jumps out at me the same, the same way it does you.
When I first looked at it, I thought it was 7.5, and then I'm like, no, there's a decimal there.
So we have a motion, a motion on the table. The motion is to approve. Is the commission ready to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion? Maybe we raise our hands in this case, so that it's easier to count the votes. Everyone, all in favor?
I will be.
One in favor. Anyone opposed? Three opposed. The chair abstains to maintain a neutral role on the issue, which I'm supposed to do. And the motion does not pass, three to one. Is there another motion on this application? Not necessary?
All right, you would have to make a motion to deny.
You'd have to make a motion to deny, right?
Right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny the application as submitted.
Motion by Ryan to deny. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Morrissey. Any discussion? Ditto to what we just discussed.
I'd ask for clarification in the record of why.
Yeah, why, there has to be a reason.
And what the solution needs to be.
Well, it doesn't have to be anything saying what the solution should be, but...
No, it doesn't. You have, you do have to stipulate, you do have to stipulate why.
For text amendments, we have to have a reason?
I think it's, I think it's more for me than anything. Just because this recommendation was presented to the commission through, through Phase Two already, and no, this comment wasn't made at that time. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, as I go forward, not with this applicant, but with FHI through Phase Two, how should we approach this? Because this has already been kind of vetted by the commission.
I have to say that I feel sometimes the meetings that we're having, when we're talking about things like text change, there's not enough time to go into an in-depth discussion and look at something this, this closely. So I'm not surprised that this has come up and people are finding more flaws. So...
But we still need a reason for the denial, correct? Or an explanation, is that what I...
I think this discussion is sufficient for the...
Okay.
I mean, for, if you want some, just for some, for me, words like reasonable and necessary, I think it needs to be much tighter because that gives too much leeway to other, to people, to personal preference, whatever they want. So, I mean, I like regulations almost like shall or, you know, and, and like, some roof structures. Is it all or just some? You know, so...
Well, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
The vague...
In some, yeah, in some cases, I understand.
And when you start like listing them, then it gets really confusing because then someone could say, well, well, it's not listed, but it's still a roof structure, so, you know, so that, like, and then the 75% obviously.
And we didn't even talk about 6.6, 0.2, say that it's the highest point of the tallest roof on the property. You know, I mean, that's, roof structures for the housing, the elevator stairways, tanks, ventilating fans, and similar equipment required to operate, maintain the building, may be erected no more than 10 feet above the highest point of the tallest roof on the building. I mean, that's even...
Bigger.
Bigger. So, no, I think that there's a lot of things here that just aren't in keeping with how we're trying to work with the regulations.
So the reason is, again, the reason that's going to be stipulated on the record?
I don't think it needs a stipulation. I think this conversation or discussion is sufficient.
Okay, fine. So it's stipulated in the discussion leading up to the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on, on the motion to deny? Okay, so, motion, motion is denied. We move on to the next matter.
Well, no, we didn't vote, I think, on the motion to deny.
That's right, I apologize, I apologize. So, all in favor of the motion to deny? Please raise your hand. So, three, the chair abstains. All opposed to the motion to deny? So it's three to one, the motion to deny passes. The application is denied. All right. Public hearing is closed. We have the next public hearing. It's on the same application.
May I see?
You may.
Okay, it's not on that, but it's related. What I would be presenting this evening, there are changes that are not, that they're not contingent upon the approval of that, that last amendment which you denied.
It's entirely up to you if you want to proceed.
There are some changes that we would like to present to you as modification, but I believe you'd have to stipulate that the changes that had to do with height cannot be granted. Is that feasible? Because there are things that are not contingent upon height.
If I may, wait, and that seems like then we're going to be kind of really trying to navigate something, and I wouldn't want to trip over, give it an approval or deny something.
That's why I'm asking the question.
I think it'd be better to come back with the entire, yeah.
We could continue it and modify...
Okay, so we could open the hearing and continue it.
I would ask the commission to table this application.
Okay, table it, yeah. You have to open it first, okay?
I would not open it, I would table it.
Oh, just table it, just not open it?
Correct.
Can you just submit some revised plans?
Correct, but that way, the clock, that way the clock doesn't start.
Yeah, but it won't be major.
We don't open a public hearing on something that is already against the proposed regulation. So I'd ask the commission to motion to table this application to the next meeting and give the applicant time to revise the plans before even opening the public hearing.
Okay, so, what's the commission's pleasure with regard to... Application number PZ242 for SUP by G Development LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table the application of PZ242 SUP by G Development
To the next meeting.
To the next scheduled meeting.
So that the applicant can revise the plans?
Correct.
Okay, motion made by Ryan. Is there a second?
We have enough time for the...
Seconded by Gary, thank you both. Any discussion on the, on the motion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair abstains. Motion passes, the matter is tabled to the next meeting.
I think the public hearing will be opened by...
Clarifications, the next meeting is the 15th.
15th, correct, yeah.
And that, and that still falls within the timeframe to open the public hearing, so everything is checked out.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Has everyone had a chance to look at future public hearings? Have any comments on, on any of the matters before we move on to adjournment?
No questions.
No questions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.